Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for June 19th, 2018. If we could call the roll, please?
Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman is absent tonight. Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Thank you very much. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three, approval of the agenda. Any changes, deletions, Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, we did have one change that was sent out yesterday morning, and that was that we included item number seven, public hearings, which is a vacation of a drainage and utility easements in Stagecoach Business Center. The reason that is on there is that we will have to continue that. We missed putting it on the agenda, and we wanted to make sure people recognize that that will be continued then until our first meeting in July. That was an oversight on our part, and we will bring that forward then.
Do we need to take action on that?
Nope. Nope. We'll just need, it'll be continued per, per, per the agenda.
Any other changes?
No, sir.
If not, Counselor Whiting?
I'd motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Counselor Mokel. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving ahead to item number four, consent agenda. Any changes, deletions, additions, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Counselor Luce?
4A4, I'd like to remove. And 4C7.
4A4 and 4C7?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else? Counselor Mokel?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent business as amended.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Whiting. Before we vote, we will have, we will read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. These are the consent agenda items for June 19th of 2018. 4A1 approves the minutes of the June 5th, 2018 meeting. 4A2 approves a temporary on-sale liquor license for Shakopee J.C.'s for the Taste of Shakopee on July 15th of 2018. 4A3 approves on-sale and Sunday liquor licenses for Bravus Modern Street Food on condition that final inspections are passed. 4A5 approves a settlement agreement with Teamsters Local Number 320 in an amount not to exceed 4A6 approves the position reclassification of IT specialist applications to IT analyst. 4B1 adopts Resolution Number R2018-TAC-068, which approves the final plat of Windermere Way. 4B2 adopts Resolution Number R2018-TAC-069, which approves the final plat of Canterbury Park, eighth edition. 4C1 adopts Resolution Number R2018-TAC-072, which approves the ADA transition plan for public rights of way. 4C2 approves the suspension of City Code Section 130.45, allowing Verling Drive Phase Two contractors to perform work from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Saturdays through September 2018, and allows the county Seal Coat Project Contractor for County Runo, Road 101 to perform work from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Saturday, June 30th and Sunday, July 1st of 2018. 4C3 approves establishing a parking zone restriction for two-hour parking during school hours within the subdivision in the countryside neighborhood west of Coper Avenue and south of Seventeenth Avenue. 4C4 approves establishing a school speed zone adjacent to the high school property along Coper Avenue from Seventeenth Avenue to the South School, School Property Line at the Shakopee City Limits. 4C5 adopts Resolution Number R2018-TAC-071, which awards a contract in the amount of $257,128.85 to Northwest Asphalt Incorporated for the 2018 Trail Rehabilitation Project, CIPF-TAC-18-TAC-001, and a 2018 Trail Overlay Project, PA-TAC-18-TAC-01. 4C6 adopts Resolution Number R2018-TAC-070, which awards a contract in the amount of $556,828 to BLD Services LLC for the 2018 Sanitary Sewer Lateral Pipe Rehabilitation Project, SAN-TAC-18-TAC-003. And 4C8 authorizes the execution of a professional services agreement with S.E.H. Incorporated for construction services for the 2018 Sanitary Sewer Lateral Pipe Rehabilitation Project,
Thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds, for reading the modified consent agenda. There is no further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving ahead to item number five. Now I'd like to call in any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Whiting?
I noticed a member from the J.C.'s is here. Would you like to talk about the Taste? It's one of our most popular attractions in Shakopee. I'm just curious how far you've come along.
Good evening and welcome.
Sorry to put you on the spot like that.
You were putting me on the spot, but thank you. Um, I am, I'm a little nervous. My name is Lindsay Case with the JCI Shakopee. We were Shakopee J.C.'s, but we rebranded under JCI Shakopee. And we've been working really, really hard this year on bringing Taste back. We have sent out lots of packets of information to the food vendors. We've actually added on a business, sorry, we've added on a business expo. I kind of crashed a couple different Taste events around the cities and kind of got an idea of how they've been running things, and we're trying to make it really big this year. We did get a 10-piece band for the amphitheater, so that's going to be really a good increase right there. And we have put in a lot of our budget into getting PR for the event as well, so.
And it looks like it's July 15th.
July 15th.
Mark your calendar.
Coming around the corner from 11:00 into 4:00. And, yeah.
Is that a Sunday?
It is a Sunday.
Okay.
We've had previous inquiries from food vendors before that wanted to participate that couldn't because we would have it on a busy night, like a Thursday or a Saturday evening. And so we decided to do it a little different and do it in the middle of the day on a Sunday, trying to get a little bit more of a family-friendly atmosphere along with more food vendors to participate. We've also, we've also talked to the city, a couple, Lori Henson and Brad, and working really hard with them and making sure everything is really good for this year and making sure we dot our i's and cross our t's.
Great. Look forward to it.
Well, great.
Very excited. So, um, yeah, and I've been like handing personal packets out to businesses, so I'm hopefully getting all the businesses that I can think of. And ran into a couple businesses that were very appreciative of getting that one-to-one contact, so.
Thanks again.
And looking forward to planning 2019 as well.
Good for you.
Thank you for letting me come talk.
Sure.
Yes, thank you.
Taste of Shakopee back, Sunday, July 15th, 11:00 to 4:00, great, in Huber Park. Thank you very much. Would any other resident citizen like to come forward and make comment on an item not on the agenda? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll move ahead then. Item number six, business removed from consent, 4A4, and Counselor Luce?
Yeah, I know this event is over with, and, you know, Mr. Thompson said it wouldn't be a major deal, but I believe if Mr. Thompson was on the other side of the argument, he could find plenty of arguments to say that it wasn't proper. I mean, we could have easily called an emergency meeting and got three people together and said, "Go for it." We've done that in the past. I don't see any reason that this was done the way it was. I think we're giving too much power to one person in the, within the city government, and, you know, it's not a slippery slope. This is a cliff we're going to fall off of.
Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to ratify the city administrator's approval of a suspending City Code 114.11, allowing alcohol to be consumed in the parking lot of Muddy Cow on June 15th and 16th, 2018, from 6:00 to midnight.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? I want to thank Mr. Thompson for looking out for the city's best interest in this regard and giving us sound legal advice for the city. Further discussion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Thank you very much. Next item up is 4C7. Counselor Luce?
Yeah, I guess I gotta, my question here is, why do we want these parcels? Are they of any use to us?
Steve?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So, the parcels in question, we have two parcels that we're looking at that are tax-forfeited to the county. The first parcel is a small sliver of a parcel off of Eagle Creek Boulevard, and maybe I should step up on the overhead. Where's the target? No target. Oh, my goodness. Okay, that should work. So this first parcel here, it is the red highlighted sliver of a parcel. I don't have the history on why that's a remnant parcel. It's at the, the corner of Eagle Creek Boulevard and Verling Drive. We are, the reason the city is interested in this parcel, for your consideration anyways. It's hard to see on this figure, but the, this, this property owner owns both of these parcels here, and the driveway is somewhat of a steep driveway, and it intersects and comes down and meets up the road right at the intersection almost. And as part of the future improvements that we're considering as, as part of Verling and Eagle Creek Boulevard, we're looking at put a roundabout at this intersection. And having a driveway this close to the intersection would be very problematic. So in the future, if this, if this project continues and proceeds, we would be looking at working with this property owner to potentially relocate their driveway and come out on Verling, which is still a difficult driveway access point, but we do want to reserve that right, and that is why we're recommending the city council to acquire that parcel. The second parcel, this is a, again, a tax-forfeited parcel off of Pike Lake Road. It is the highlighted parcel. Again, I don't know the history of, of that parcel, why it, why it went into tax forfeiture, but currently, the developer is completing the Crossing Boulevard roadway project on the north. As part of the Ridge Creek Development, this larger parcel is being looked at, being dedicated to the city. The city is considering implementing a nature park in that area and/or realigning the Prior Lake Outlet Channel, which runs across the parcel, and potentially creating some stormwater improvements on, on this larger parcel. We thought it important to incorporate this remnant parcel into the wetland complex and the potential nature park area, and that is why we're recommending acquisition of that parcel as well. So I stand for any questions?
Any other questions in this regard? Total cost is a little over three grand in total for both these?
Yes, the, the, the first parcel costs $465, and the majority of that is processing fees. The actual cost of the parcels is $100 for the first parcel and $1,500, so the, the land costs are $1,600. But then processing fees and all of that, it equates to about $20, $200.
Okay. All right. Further questions? Counselor Luce?
No. Just wanted an explanation for the public so that they knew what was going on.
Excellent. Counselor Mokel?
I make a motion authorizing the execution of tax-forfeited property purchase request for parcel PID 271310950, Outlet B, Howard's Fourth Edition, and parcel PID 274010550, Outlet A, Ridge View Estates.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to 7A1, Monthly Financial Review. Darren?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Give me one second here. There we go. That's nice and big there to see that. Before you tonight is the May financial review. There isn't a whole lot new since the last time I was here, talking about April. It's basically the same trajectory. Our variances are still the same, same on that end of it. Not a whole lot of, whole lot of movement one way or another. We're still seeing good revenues come in. If we look at our revenues to date, you know, this report here shows 16%. That doesn't account for any taxes that come in twice a year. They actually come in, our first half settlement comes in actually on Thursday this week. So in June financial report, when we report that in July, then we'll actually see some movement there on the revenues, and they'll be more in line where we're at. But if we take the taxes out of the equation, we're actually sitting at about 46% of the revenues at this point in the year. And so our target at this point, seven months or five months through the year, where it should be at about 42%, so we're right on line there. There's a couple lower ones, the intergovernmental revenue that arrow is pointing down, but it's pretty close to what the revenues were at this point last year. They're a little bit less than last year, and that's kind of due to the municipal state aid maintenance dollars that we have. We reduced those amounts a little bit and moved them over to our capital improvement fund under municipal state aid construction dollars, but we did account for that in our budget when we were planning for the 2018 budget. Misleading is revenues are higher than we anticipated, and that's really due to some of our interest rates are on the rise. That's, we're seeing some good investments now compared to what we've seen over the last several years. When I can say you can get 3% now for, you know, a three-year, you know, investment is good on that end of it compared to getting, you know, 1% for five years, a couple years ago. So that'll really help our, our financial status as well to, with, within our funds, so. Any questions on the revenues before I move over to the expenditures on the, within the general fund?
No.
Seeing none. Looking at the expenditures here, again, nothing has changed. We've increased one more month into the, into the year, into the fiscal year. The one red arrow is that mayor and council line that we've talked about throughout the years, that, that department or division experiences a lot of upfront costs at the beginning of the year, and the total costs kind of fall back in line as the year progresses and such. And we see that, that it's, I would assume by next month it'll have the sideways arrow or the yellow arrow at that point in time, so. Finance, where you are, I did process the payment for our assessment agreement or, with Scott County for this month in June, so that's, I believe that's about, what is that? About $280,000 is what the assessors cost. The assessment agreement with Scott County costs us to have them go around and determine assessment amount or property values for the city and such like that. So that arrow will probably turn red for next month, but then it'll gradually work its way out on that end of it. Natural resources here again, as summer approaches, we're in that season, expenditures would start to increase in, in that area as well, too. So you can see total expenditures are at about 37% below that 43% target at this point, so sitting, sitting in a good spot, general fund-wise there as well, too.
Questions on the expense side? And we'll get that finance department in order then next month?
Whoa. As best we can, as best we can.
All right. Thank you.
So looking over then at the recreation area, at Community Center Sand Venture Ice Arena area. Let me get this a little bit bigger so you can see it. There we go. If you look at the revenues, they're about $45,000 more than they were this time last year. That's, that's good news. There is a portion of that that's, we've talked about, that it was an accounting shift between 2016 and 2017. 2016 was overstated by about $11,000. Conversely, 2017 was understated, so when you compare the current year of 2018 to 2017, you got to kind of take that into consideration. But even with that $11,000 accounting change there, you're still looking at about $34,000 of increased revenue compared to this time last year, which is good. So I'm talking about the ice arena manager, we're selling more ice in the summer now than we did last year, so I think.
Selling more?
Yep. So I think, you know, the, the summer programs or those non-association programs are realizing the ice that we do have available and such like that. We had some good turf rental this spring as well, too, so I would expect even next year that to even be hopefully more. Hopefully the spring is a better spring than this year, but if they know ahead of, know about it ahead of time, they'll better planning and such like that.
Counselor Whiting?
And the turf rental side, when they take out the ice and put the turf in for the different lacrosse teams, I think it is, that is still captured under this ice arena?
Yep, yep, that's captured under the revenues under the Ice Arena.
Okay.
Yep, that's the facility there is capturing those revenues. And we did see a, a reduction then in our utilities for that. I can't remember exactly how many weeks we had that in there, but it had to be at least a month and a half or, or two months that we had the turf in there, and we did see a reduction in our electric and, and gas charges for those months as well, too. So that did help, you know, the ice rent or the turf rental is as much as the ice rental, but, you know, maybe we were renting more hours of turf compared to ice during that timeframe as well, too, so. All good news on that end of it. The expenditures, if you look at, kind of combine the wages and the operating expenditures, you can see the, the variance there is $19,000 and a negative $17,000, so they're virtually identical when you compare the total, total costs from one year to the next on that end of it. So that's, that's all good news, and they're right in line with kind of our budget target at this point in time as well, too, so. So looking at the Community Center, Sand Venture, the revenues there at about 50% of our 2018 budget, so that's, that's good. Comparing that to last year's revenues, obviously, we got a facility that is up and running 100% compared to this time last year. We didn't have the Community Center pool fully operational at that point in time. Your expenditure side of it, Sand Venture now is up and running. That obviously wasn't the case in, in May, so we'll start to see our recreation programming, not only Sand Venture, but our recreation programming and seasonal expenses will increase this in the expenditure side of it through our busy season in the summer here. And our revenues that we would expect to increase as well, too, as we take in revenues for daily admissions and, and programming and such as well, too, so. But all in all, everything's looking good on the expenditure side of it as well for the Community Center along with the revenue, so. And that deferred revenue number, we've been kind of tracking that and comparing that month to month, and here you can see we got $223,000 of cash on the books that we'll recognize over the next 12 months, basically. That's revenue that's yet to be earned, so. So that would be membership sales, annual membership sales that have yet to be recognized as, as revenue. So we recognize those as we earn them each month, so.
Other questions? Questions? If not, thank you. Moving ahead then to next item, 7A2, Review of 2019 Budget Listening Session. Mr. Reynolds?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Darren, okay. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Nelson and I had two different listening sessions with the public a week and a half, two weeks ago, where, to remind everybody, as, according to state law, we are required to have a public hearing on the budget before the budget is passed, and that is normally in December. The reality is, is that if somebody came into this council at the meeting in December and wanted us to change something in the budget or had some concerns about something, it would be very difficult for us to do anything about it at that point. In many communities, they actually will have the public hearing, and the very next item on the agenda will be approval of the budget. We actually have elected to at least have a, a two-week period between those two, and we have also, as part of our transparency initiative and actually trying to make sure that people understand that, that they know what we're doing with their money, instituted these budget listening sessions three years ago, two years ago, and to, and it, this is actually the beginning of our budget process. It starts with the people. So with that being said, Darren, the first part of these sessions will give his overview with me kind of chiming in every now and then, but we understood that council had some, you know, desire to know what it was we were talking about. Counselor Luce hung outside the doorway and was listening in when we were doing one of them.
Excuse me. I have this hearing deal because I have trouble hearing. I can't hear you without it, so if I'm hanging outside a door, I'm not listening. I was waiting for someone.
Okay. Let's continue.
So anyway.
Keep your thoughts to yourself.
So anyway, the whole purpose again is to try to get input from the public, and with that being said, let's go ahead and kick off what we talked about, Darren.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Here is actually, this is the slideshow from those listening sessions, hence the date of June 6th and 7th on, on there, and they're both held at the Public Library, and unfortunately, our timing probably wasn't the greatest. June 6th was the night of the Clydesdale's town, so although there was lots of people within the vicinity of the library, there wasn't a lot of people actually at the library in our session, so it is what it is on that end of it. So we really wanted to emphasize, as Mr. Reynolds mentioned, these are listening sessions. We want to kind of extract feedback from the public as best we could, given it's tough to, to get the public into a setting like that to talk about the budget, but it is an opportunity for us to kind of explain how the budget, budget kind of works and how we, it's not a, a quick process. It takes, you know, many months to formulate and such like that. And so kind of kicking off the budget is, the guidelines of that budget really comes from your guys' work plan and your budget priorities set by the council. So those are our driving factors of how we want to draft our budget or how we want to draft the plan going forward. So those are our driving factors of how we want to draft our budget or how we want to draft the plan going forward. And some of those items that are included in the work plan are to maintain current service levels. So we're not looking to expand or contract. We're looking to kind of maintain services that we provide at this point to maintain a sta, a stable tax rate, so we're not trying to increase taxes, but we're trying to keep that, that tax rate as, maintain that tax rate and hopefully try to decrease that rate. We're always looking to increase tax capacity. We want to increase new growth because we don't necessarily, when we increase tax capacity and there's no new growth, while we all pay the same, it's just the pie gets bigger, but your section of the pie also gets bigger. So we really look for the new growth in our, in our tax capacity because that's what's going to help spread that tax burden across the base. And then we also look at the budget priority of increasing your bond, our bond rating as a whole. And so we look. Oh, this is, I'm sorry, this slide is a little bit out of order here, but. Here we go. We'll go to this one here. This is how I wanted it presented and how it may be presented in the, in the agenda. But looking at our bond rating history, I know that's been a, a priority of the council is to increase that bond rating from that. We're at the double A one right now up to that triple A. But I wanted to go, kind of go back through the history of that. And so an A one rating, if you look at that, and that, this is by Moody's. And so an A one rating, we're back in June of two thousand and two. That's about middle of the pack across all cities, across the whole entire country. So of all the cities in the nation, an A one rating, you're at about fifty percent. You've got half on one side of you and half on the other. But then in two thousand and four, we moved up to a double A three. And a double A three then is, is better than a double A one. It's one notch better. And that increases your status to you're in the top third of the, of the cities in the country at that point. And in two thousand and ten, it got bumped up to a double A two, which had, in July of two thousand and ten, wasn't the greatest economy, and to get bumped up to a double A two is, is a good, a good indicator at that point in time. And a double A two actually puts you in the top fifteen percent of the cities in the nation. So that's pretty good company right there. Double A one, which was, we were moved up to in November of two thousand and fifteen, that puts us in the top seven percent of the cities in the, in the country. That's really good company. There's only one notch above you, and that's a triple A. And so if you look at this chart here, the yellow mark here is where we're at now, the double A one. Triple A is to the left of us, which is a little bit better. Three percent of the cities in the, in the country have a triple A bond rating. That's pretty remarkable at that point in time. A double A one is nothing to sneeze at. It's, it's a really good, solid rating, something we should be very proud of. And we do want to move up to that triple A notch, and I think we'll be able to get there to look at increasing some of our financial policies. We'll look at some of that. We've been talking with our financial advisor a little bit about looking at maybe a different rating agency or having them come in and look at the projects we have on board as well too, so.
Questions on that, Councilor Lewis?
Can you explain to the public what the ratings do for the city as far as once we hit a triple A?
Oh yeah, absolutely. Great question. Your bond rating is basically just like your credit score from a person, personal standpoint. It helps with your, the better your credit score, obviously, the lower your borrowing rates. So if we need to borrow any funds, and that's the one thing too that maybe holds us back a little bit, is that we don't, we haven't been borrowing a lot. We borrowed a little bit, or we borrowed for the community center and such like that, but we're not, we're not a city that borrows every year. We're, we'll have multiple issuances a year. There's a lot of cities our size that that's their program, is that they're borrowing money each and every year, maybe a couple of times a year to pay for street reconstruction projects or to pay for other amenities or whatnot on that end of it. But that's what the rating does. It helps you with your, your borrowing interest rate when you go to issue debt.
Counselor Lewis?
Just to expand on that, you were saying from two thousand and two till, till now, how much of a change would that have been in our, our credit rating, you know?
As far as an interest rate?
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's really difficult to tell. I, I don't have that information on me offhand. You know, moving from a double A one to a triple A isn't going to be much. It's going to be, you know, a, a ten basis points or something to that nature. So if it's, if it's three percent bond, we might be able to get a two-point-nine percent bond. Or it might even be less than that potentially.
But point nine of thirty million dollars is a big chunk of money.
It, it adds up. Yeah, absolutely does. And it, yeah, absolutely. So over time, it, it, it does benefit your residents to have a higher bond rating, so.
Also, please be, and I think you mentioned it during this time period of two thousand and two, you know, those were some recessionary times during those periods to see the bond rating move up and the cost savings moving forward as you bond out twenty, thirty years. You know, even incrementally, it does save the community and the taxpayers a lot of money.
So if, if we moved it up to a triple A, would that automatically change our current bonds that we hold? Or would we have to refinance, or is it just what it is?
Uh, no. So those bonds have already been issued, and they're issued at a cer, a certain rate. And so that's what they are at that point in time. They do do, each year they look at you, and the Moody's will look at our situation and give us another, give their buyers of bonds an update on the city. So how's the financial health of that city? How's the outlook of that city going? Are they still on the same track that we had projected them two years ago? Or have there been changes one direction or another on that end of it as well too? So any potential buyers of our bonds that are on the secondary market at this point in time, would be able to go to that and say, hey, you know, the city of Shockley's a good investment, or, I mean, you've got lots of growth. They're going in the right direction. Yes, I want to buy those bonds at this market rate of interest at the, where they're at now, so.
Continue.
That basically would affect the secondary market at this time. So if your interest rate goes up, or if our bond rating goes up a little bit, that is, probably secures that bond a little bit more, so that actually the market value of that bond probably decreases a little bit and makes it a more secure, a secure bond, so. I want to jump back here, sorry. Moving on a little bit to the budget cycle itself, there are two major parts to that. There's the operations side of it that we've been talking about now. The general fund piece of that is the, a big part of that, but we also have the enterprise funds, the water and sewer, not water, but sewer and, and storm drainage funds. There's operating cycles to those as well too. But another big section is the capital improvement plan or the CIP, and that includes our streets, the, the capital portions of our utilities, so those sewer reconstruction projects, any equipment replacements that we have, park, park maintenance type items such as playground replacement and things of those nature, and then building, repair and maintenance as well too are part of that CIP. And that's really what staff is working on at this point. I think we're going to try to get a, a study session with the council coming up at that second meeting in July, hopefully. So be prepared for that. And then we'll move into the operating budget at that point in time where we really look at the, at the general fund, look at the tax levy, see all that plays into it. And the capital, the CIP does have a tax element as well too. We do have a small amount of tax dollars going into the capital improvement fund, but it's a fairly small amount at this point, so. So then looking a little bit at our growth, we talked a little bit about the growth of the, of our taxes, of our tax base. We're really looking at the tax capacity piece of it. And we've been fortunate here in Shockley to have significant tax capacity growth over the last three years. And even before that as well too, I just put three on here. But here you can see that it's probably averaged about six and a half percent growth over the last three years. And for taxes payable twenty nineteen, we're actually, it's about seven-point-three-three percent in tax capacity growth. So that's another good year. Our, our market value for taxes payable twenty nineteen, which is the valuation date of January first, two thousand and eighteen, we're at five-point-six billion. So over three years, we've increased our, our value here over a billion dollars citywide. So that's, that's some good numbers there.
Right. Darren, for me, this is a, a, I think, a significant slide because if you can grow your, grow your tax base via new growth, obviously then the pie gets better, and then your portion of the pie has an opportunity to be less. And given all the, the things, and it's real important, and obviously we had a, a recession there several years ago, but great to see our community do well in that growth area.
Right, and I, it'd be curious to see back, I should go back and look and see what our, our market value was kind of pre-recessionary period and kind of see how that compares to now. That'd be interesting to kind of see that, so.
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, the development of the Canterbury area that we've all voted on to, you know, give them the green light, that's going to account for four tenths or more of that billion dollars that you talked about.
Right, it's, that'll be some tax capacity. Obviously, if there's a TIF involved, it's, it plays into it a little bit differently where there isn't all that, all that isn't necessarily coming back to the city at one point, but it, it will in the end when it's all said and done.
Correct, and when it's said and done, it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Big windfall for the city.
Oh, absolutely. That's going to be, that's a big, a big chunk of dollars there of tax capacity coming online.
And remember that anything that, that is just starting to go on the ground now, it's about a two-year delay, is that correct?
Absolutely, it is. So it, you know, if it goes in the ground right now, it might not be until twenty twenty-one that you might see some of it, some of that tax is coming in, so.
Well, this is great, this is a great slide. I really appreciate that. Thanks. Oh, Counselor Lewis?
The end date is more important than the going in the ground date, correct, for taxation?
Right, so the, the county does an assessment at January first each year. So whatever is in the ground prior to that date gets a valuation. So even if it's a partial year, if, say you just, you, you pour, you get some of the base footings in the ground or whatever, in a base floor of, of a facility or something like that, you'll have some value there that'll get added. But it's the end goal is what you're really looking for at the end of that, to get that full value on to the tax rolls. For instance, I think Amazon just came on now for pay, taxes payable twenty eighteen. The full value just came on now because of that valuation was from January one of two thousand and seventeen. So I think it went from twenty million the one year to sixty million the, the final valuation, so.
Yeah, and I just wanted that explanation for the public.
No, full, full year of an OC usually in a, something like that, and you build it up as you build. But it, the, it, it's usually about a two-year delay, whether it's housing. I know in that first year you get the lot tax and your house isn't valued at full, but, you know, that's why plan for the future, right?
Right, right. So then we look at some of the known budget impacts, some things that really, we will be looking at that will affect the budget. Obviously, we're in a service organization. Personnel in any service organization is, is their biggest cost. That's no different with, with our government or with any government on that end of it. We have union contracts in place that are set for two thousand and nineteen, so we have certain cost of living adjustments and such like that that are set in place. The police and fire pension, the governor recently signed a, a bill, pension bill that aids in kind of creating some sustainability for the police and fire pensions. So that'll add a little bit of cost to us. It's not substantial, but it is a little additional cost that we need to account for. And then we're looking at, at self-insurance as well too, and we've, I know we've mentioned this to the council as well too, that last year when we went through the budget process, you know, initially we had, what was it, a thirty-three percent or something like that preliminary increase in our health insurance. And we really took a hard look with staff and our employees, and all the employees, to really figure out how we wanted to go forward with health insurance. And things with some great, you know, public, or input meetings and such like that, we kind of went a little bit different direction with our health, health insurance and were able to kind of control those costs a little bit more. We're looking to take that one step further and exploring the opportunity of doing some self-insurance on the health insurance side of things. The council set aside, what was that, about six-hundred thousand dollars or so at the end of fiscal year seventeen? They set aside in a separate little pot of, pot on the side that said, okay, we're going to use this money for, you know, startup funds for self-insurance if it makes sense. So staff is in that process now of, of looking at that and exploring that more. I'm not sure if we'll make that for two thousand and nineteen or if it'll be, and out another year, but it's there to help sustain that, and that'll really help control costs long-term, provide a little bit better input for employees as far as health direction and things like that as well too, so. So then we also look at one other budget impact is state, is state funding. We do get several different areas of state funding. We get municipal state aid from our road taxes and such like that, but we do not get local government aid. There's a lot of cities that do, and there's a lot of cities that don't. We're one of those cities that, that don't. And we didn't, we did put in for some state bonding dollars as well, and we did not get any of those. I believe for the Memorial Park Bridge was one of them, and then a fire station, a potential new fire station three was, was looking, looked at as well too, so. So then lastly, this is a little bit what Mr. Reynolds talked about as well too, is that, first of all, the truth and taxation statements, after you set the preliminary levy in September, those truth and taxation statements are mailed out to every property owner about the mid-November or so, and those actually state the, the public hearing date of our public meeting for our budget. And this year, that will be on December fourth. That's that opportunity for the public to come up here and talk about the budget. There's a lot of time between now and December, and there's a lot of work that goes into the budget to prepare it by December fourth. And so then we move in onto the two weeks later where we approve the final budget. And we leave that gap in there, as Mr. Reynolds mentioned, just to, not only is transparency, but if something comes up, we have the ability and flexibility to, to make some changes there on the fly, so. Cross the fingers that you don't want to get to that point, but it, you do have the opportunity in case something, I mean, you never know if something catastrophic happens or, or on that end of it, so. And then lastly, we just, we ended with our slide that kind of shows the breakdown of, of the taxes, of your tax bill. Most homeowners, this is from a kind of a homeowner, homeowner standpoint, it's made up of mainly three portions, the city, the county, and the school district are, are those main three portions. Here you can see they're, they're about a third and a third and a third, a little heavier on the school side of it, but those make up a majority of it, so. And that's all I have. So if you have any questions?
More questions for Darren? I want to thank you and the administrator for reaching out to the public to do these listening sessions. You know, sometimes it's, you know, people don't always attend in their busy lives, but I think just the ability to do them and allow that opportunity. I know we spend a lot of time in those chambers, but out in the public, real important for people, at least the opportunity to. I mean, you kind of, you gotta want it, and you gotta get involved and ask questions. But I, I do appreciate this and your effort, and thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, the public that I've spoken with on some of the taxation stuff, they have a very tough time grasping some of them. So it's, it's something that, you know, people are unfamiliar with, and they, I don't know if we need to do, I hate to say it, a remedial class on taxation for them, something to get them started. You know, just to get more participation.
Well, something, I mean, I think that, you know, maybe they don't want to come into this chamber here to, to listen or ask questions, but certainly this public outreach by the city minister and Darren, a great opportunity to be able to sit in a small group and ask those questions. Counselor Lewis?
Well, how about doing something online where they could submit questions online to the city website? And, you know, we could answer them.
We have that available now.
We already have that, yeah.
Well, promote it a little more.
Promote it a little more. Counselor Whiting?
No, I, I agree when, when people, what happens is, you know, our city actually is not taking as much taxes, but people's property values go up, and they see it as, oh, you're taxing me more, and, and they don't understand. So I agree with how that works because we've done a lot of work on keeping people's taxes low, but they see it, all they see it as a dollar sign because their market value.
It's always creeping up.
Yeah, and that's good when you want to sell, but not good when you want to pay taxes, so that understanding is important.
There's a, also I think a little bit of disconnect because in the spring or in the winter, we get our valuation. And that's for the following year that really sets how much your value goes up, and that's set by the county. And that, if your value goes up, you, you know, don't get mad at the city, you talk to the county, and those meetings are in the spring. In the fall, cities and municipalities set their levy based off that already set number of value that was done in the spring, and, and then they come forward and say, well, my taxes are raising. Well, your value might be going up too, and I know in the past we've had residents here, my value's gone up. And, yep, that opportunity to do that is not in November or December. It's in, I think those meetings are in May, I believe.
Is it now now, or is it past?
Past, I think.
I think it's already passed, I believe, yeah.
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, they always love it when their valuation comes in higher, but then when they figure out that they have to be taxed on that, that's when they get irritated.
That's, that's so true. Again, thank you, thank you. Now for the discussion, moving ahead then to seven B one, reorganization of park and rec department. And Nate's going to present. Welcome.
Yeah, before Nate jumps up, I just kind of wanted to give a general overview of what we're looking at here. From an administration standpoint, it's very important that we have our organization designed for employee success. A lot of times, if things slip through the cracks, that it, it really is not the fault of an employee. It is, it is frankly the fault of the way the organization is put together. We've had some challenges with customer service in regards to our parks and rec department in the past. We're, we're all aware of that. I can tell you that in the last couple of months, I've been extremely impressed with the staff now that Nate has kind of empowered them to basically control their own data. control their own day-to-day activities, uh, this particular, uh, organizational restructuring that we're bringing before you today is designed to take that director out of the position of trying to manage multiple pieces of the department, and really empowering the organization leaders of four, of three areas to have control of what they do. Uh, and, uh, and then taking the, the, we currently have two different, uh, maintenance departments. We have one in the Parks and Rec Department, and we have one for the rest of the city. That will be combined together as part of this as well. Uh, in the past, by having five, six, seven, eight different direct reports to the director, uh, with no real physical boundaries as to who was responsible for what, things fell through the cracks. And, 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 you know, that's not good customer service. Uh, I'm very confident, uh, this, by the way, ninety-five percent of this, uh, has come from your Park and Rec staff. Uh, Nate and I initially had been looking at some things, and, uh, uh, the Parks and Rec staff, uh, really became energized. Uh, they wanted to take a look at the way that things were developed, and, uh, they knocked it out of the park. Uh, this is, this is a great effort, this is a great organizational structure. We're empowering the people that are in charge of particular buildings and programs to actually be able to take care of them. Uh, and that will set up this organization for success in the future, and my hat's off to, uh, Mr. Burkett and, and, uh, all of the employees at the Parks and Rec Department, uh, who have went through a stressful period and are just absolutely moving forward. Uh, I spent some time over there Friday afternoon, and I was extremely impressed on, as to what's happening. With that being said, Nate?
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, uh, mayor and council members. I don't really need to say too much more. The real request here in front of you is to establish three new positions uh, at the manager level, grade one eighty, recreation manager for the community center, for the ice arena, and for programming and services. Um, but we did want to go through a little bit of what the reorganization would look like, so that you have an understanding of how we plan to, uh, put that department together. Just so you're aware, uh, the financial impacts, uh, I did go through and take a look at what, um, the current costs were, and what we would project them out at twenty nineteen, kind of as-is, um, and then kind of put together a projection as to what it would look like if we did reorganize. I do see a cost savings related to, uh, being able to eliminate one part-time position, um, some decreases in salaries, and some decrease in part-time staffing costs. So, I just wanted to let you know that approving this by itself as a standalone is not going to have any impact, um, in terms of requesting more general levy dollars, or more, or necessary new revenues to, uh, absorb the costs. Why reorganize this department? Um, the first thing is to align the department with the customer experience. When you walk into the community center, um, your experience is, you walk into the building, you're going to a fitness class, you're taking the kids to Kids Cove, you're walking into the weight room, um, maybe going into the aquatic center, but what you don't know is that under the current structure, is that when you walk into the aquatic center, you're walking into somebody else's domain. Because it was structured in such a way that we had a supervisor over aquatics and a supervisor over the community center. That's not how the customer experiences things. They experience it in holistic patterns. So, we are aligning the department and its organization with the way our customer experiences us. Uh, this really is empowering the managers to make plans, implement solutions, and resolve problems that arise. We had a couple of issues that arose over the weekend, and by the end of the day today, the managers had taken a really strong command, talked about it, made some decisions, and implemented a really, really, great solution, so we shouldn't see that type of issue arise again. I see this as streamlining the organization, uh, so that they can focus on one particular area. Uh, for example, right now, the manager that oversees primarily the community center also oversees some hu, some, not all, Huber Park activities. Under the new structure, the community center manager, community center manager manages the community center. Huber, the programming and services manager will manage those activities in Huber Park.
We have a question over here. Nate, Councilor Lewis?
Yeah, you just, uh, gave us an idea of something that came up. Without getting too deep into it, can you give us an idea of what the problem was and what the solution was?
Sure, it was related to the dress code, um, in the pools. The requirement that you're wearing actual swimwear. Um, it was turning into an issue that was causing problems, and we realized that there really wasn't a reason that somebody had to wear something that was specifically designed as a swimsuit. We narrowed it down to no sweatpants, no cutoff shorts, no, no loose, um, t-shirts that have strings hanging, and nothing that will weigh somebody down significantly, because those are our actual four big concerns. Changed the policy, they did it on their own, because they were interacting with too many people in a negative way, and it really had no impact on the efficacy, the issue was, we were worried that the fibers would come off of those clothes and get stuck in the filters, and after really considering it, it just didn't matter that much. They made the change, they took the initiative, and I think that's what's important. I think related to those types of things, I think that over the course of the fall and maybe a little bit into the spring, you would hear complaints about customer service at the community center and some of our newer facilities, and I think that those have gone down because I have empowered people up there to make good decisions and take action.
Follow-up, Councilor Lewis?
No, I'd just like to applaud staff for what they came up with. I mean, that's a great way to handle it. Just because it's not swimwear, just to one person, doesn't mean it's not appropriate swimwear in a pool.
Do you believe that would have not happened a year ago?
Generally speaking, no, I think it would have taken longer.
It's clear and better direction now, and it's generated from staff, right?
That's correct. I believe the staff are comfortable, and they know their lane, and they know that when they make a decision, if they've thought it through, and they can justify it after the fact, they're not going to. They have the authority to make those decisions.
Good, continue.
Um, this, uh, restructure will incorporate aquatics under the management of the community center manager. That includes both the aquatic center at the community center and Sand Venture. Um, we did just hire on a new, uh, aquatic supervisor to replace Sarah Foley. Her name's Katie Nadoo. She's doing a fantastic job. She's kind of been doing the job in the interim for about the past month. Um, but it is under, would be under, um, the community center manager. And as I said, the reason for that is because I think that the fate of the community center and the fate of aquatics are intertwined. A lot of people have community center memberships for the specific purpose of using the pool, particularly in the water. So we want to make sure that the activities of the front desk staff and those that are working throughout the community center are fully intertwined with the aquatic staff as well. Uh, this restructure will focus the director on leading the department, working with administration, other departments, and partners in overseeing departmental improvements. I think that there are a lot of things that can improve over the course of time. I see a lot of process efficiency, a lot of policy and procedure efficiencies that can be made. I see a lot of potential partnerships that I think have been, I won't say neglected, but a lot of potential partnerships that can bring in new revenues to the city. Just the other night, we were talking about new potential ways to bring revenues in through the park system. I know that's something that's important to the council. I think that this structure allows that director to focus more on those things. Um, this also does consolidate facilities maintenance under administration. At this moment, I'm not proposing to make any changes necessarily to the structure of the, um, the two supervisors for facilities, um, but they will, we will move, uh, the facility supervisor from community center, um, under the assistant city administrator, so that all of our facilities, uh, folks are working together. We've been doing it now for about the last two months. It's working really well. I'd just like to be able to take some time and see what the right direction is going forward on that. Those are kind of the big reasons why I think I could dive a little bit into, I did a very brief summary of some of my operational analysis. The things that I really want to hit on are the staff up there, and these three bullet points under expectations came from them very early on in my tenure as the interim director up there. They really do believe in exceptional customer service. They understand revenue enhancement and process efficiency as, as being important to the council, and they really do want to put the right services, services and programs in the right place at the right time. They really do have, as far as the strengths go, I want you to know that they really do have a, a supportive culture up there. When you walk into the building, that between themselves, and actually very much so, especially over the last couple of months amongst the customers, they're a great group of people. Really do care, um, very supportive of each other and of our customers. They really do have a solutions focus, focus. They don't spend too much time, uh, focusing on blaming other people. Um, they focus on trying to find ways to be better, and that goes along with the next one. They do have a desire to improve, as, uh, Mr. Reynolds said. This plan did primarily come from the staff there at the community center, and the rest of the department all working together. And they really do have a passion for services and customers. The things that they do, they really are passionate about. So you got a really great team up there. I've really enjoyed working with them. Um, and I do believe that this, um, organizational structure will help kind of take the next steps towards being a really, really efficient, effective, customer-oriented, excellent organization.
Councilor Lewis?
One of the biggest questions I have or complaints that I get from citizens is expanding the hours, especially some of the holiday days that they're closed. They, you know, they all complain that all the big fitness centers are all open on those days, why isn't ours? And it holds down some of our sales of, of, you know, people buying memberships.
Uh, mayor and council members, I haven't really heard too much about kind of the big days being an issue. Um, I've heard issues related to the hours that were open in the aquatic center, which I think are being resolved really well and on their way to being completely resolved, um, over the course of the summer and into the fall. And I've heard issues with hours related to Kids Cove, um, the availability of, um, the daycare versus the times that we have fitness center offerings. It's not to say we wouldn't address, you know, what days we are open and what days we are not. It's just not something that we've heard or had to really deal with yet. I think it's probably on the table in the future. To be compet, because we realize we are competitive with the Y and Dakota and lifetimes of the world, so. Um, I, it's all right, I'd just like to address, because I feel like, I just want to make absolutely clear, this is the beginning. Um, this piece is not going to have, uh, an expense impact, but we do have some ideas that we'd like to bring forward. I listed them, I don't need to go through them, uh, but, uh, as we've said, we want to be a very customer-focused organization. Uh, we want to deliver what our customers are asking for, we want to drive new revenues. There are five ideas listed down here that I think, uh, potentially may be requested in the next budget going forward. So this is not in a vacuum, but I would like to get the process started of organizing this direction, um, so that we can evaluate some of these ideas a little bit better.
Discussion on these? You want comments on this or feedback?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if you want to discuss it, I'm completely open to that. Otherwise, what I would ask for is the motion to approve the three positions.
Councilor Whiting?
You know, I think, uh, this, the future, what we're talking about here is the future ideas, in my mind, which I think you talked about bringing forward in the future budget, because at this point, I, I don't think we have enough information to make that decision, but, uh, having said that, the three positions we're talking about as far as the recreation managers, I would, uh, uh, offer a motion to establish three new positions, recreation manager, community center at grade one eighty, recre, recreation manager ice arena at grade one eighty, and recreation manager programming and services at grade one eighty.
Councilor Lewis?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, discussion. One of the things that I think, uh, even just in the, a couple of things, I like the maintenance coming all together with all our facilities. I think that makes too much sense. Um, also looking at the old org chart and the new one, where it was one, one director and, and seven direct reports. Now it would be going to one director and four directory, four direct reports, and then splitting those out of those four to nine. Um, I like the idea of the community center facility, the ice rink, th- those three key positions that were a motion on the table. I think that really brings hopefully some efficiencies and effectiveness with the goal of customer service being number one. I think, uh, I think this is some good work here. Councilor Lewis?
Um, the customer service is a great idea, and I think the, opening up the, the park director to look for new revenue sources is about equal to customer service.
Uh, Councilor Whiting?
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, uh, a lot of this direction came from our current staff, and I know you've done a lot of work to, to be part of that and mentor that, so I want to thank you for that, and, um, but I think the whole empowering of our current staff, because there was some, some rock stars there that could actually, if you just unhook the leash, you could really, uh, go after this and, and much more, so, uh, appreciate that, and, uh, as well, that's been stated before, the customer service aspect has been a big focus of this council, and, uh, I think we'll only do better, uh, at the community center as far as, uh, you know, revenue streams, if that, you know, continues to go that way, so, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Mokel?
I'd also like to thank you and the staff for the job that you're doing. We created a great asset in our Park and Rec, especially our community center, and for them to step up and want to help out with what we're doing and our initiatives is, is so great to hear about, and I appreciate you transitioning a little bit over there and helping us get through this problem, this, this time.
Okay, further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then, eight A, the city bill list for our review. In front of us, um, eight B, liaison administration report. I guess I can start here. Um, uh, on the table I get, was handed out, um, revel, Reverend Samuel Pond fundraiser for next Tuesday, June twenty-six, at, uh, uh, the, uh, Shelley's at six P M, Shelley's Boutique, another great opportunity. So, moving back to, uh, a couple items that I went to on Friday, June eighth, attended scale, general membership meeting. Uh, they had, uh, the discussion was on social media and the role of government. They had an expert there, uh, John Rash, that spoke for over an hour about the influx of social media, and then how do we play a role as government to put out pertinent, factual information? I thought it was, uh, very engaging. Um, last night, I attended the swearing-in of, uh, uh, six new firefighters for the city of Shakopee, on one of our largest classes that we've had in a while. And today I spoke at the, uh, Shakopee Chamber of Commerce Leadership Lunch. It was government day for a, a group, they have a class of nine that they hold every year, uh, for a leadership thing, and today was, uh, government day, so, uh, spoke with Commissioner Beard and, uh, Representative Lunin and, uh, uh, Senator Pratt, so, that's my report. Councilor Whiting?
Uh, thank you, and, uh, good, getting back to your Samuel Pond fundraiser on the twenty-sixth, it's not bingo, it's boutique-o.
Boutique-o.
Is that a boutique-o?
It is, it's not, it's, it's like bingo, but it's better, I heard.
Okay. Uh, on Wednesday, the thirteenth, uh, we had our first meeting of, uh, the park committee, uh, taking a look at, uh, our, uh, comprehensive plan and how we handle the park systems and that, uh, went very well, and we, uh, the, as a group, recommended, uh, one consulting group that'll be coming forward in the future, I believe, for our approval.
Thank you.
I did not have any this week.
Thank you. Our administration report, Mr. Reynolds?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, a few, uh, events that we have coming up. Uh, tomorrow morning at nine A M is the Special Olympics Torque Torch Run. Uh, it's a five K, it starts at the police department, it seems awful long for a five K, I will say, maybe I'm just getting older. Uh, it starts at the police department, cost is twenty dollars and includes a t-shirt. Uh, please come out and support. This is the final leg of the Special Olympics Torch Run. Uh, it's a lot of fun. Uh, there'll be city staff, police officers, Special Olympians, and others participating. Uh, and, uh, special thanks to Sergeant John Butow, who's been putting this together for, uh, the city for quite some time. Uh, his work in this area is to be, uh, commended. Uh, he's doing a fantastic, uh, job, uh, in, in all of his work with the Special Olympics. Uh, we have an envisioned Shakopee, uh, draft review for council on the twenty-sixth, the workshop at seven P M. And for those in the public, this is the draft, uh, thirty-eight page- And for those in the public, this is the draft 38-page executive summary. The actual plan is going to be over 400 pages, but we're going to have a review of that on the workshop on the 26th of June at 7:00 PM. And then the very next day, we will have a public input session on 27 June from 6:30 to 8:30 at the community center. The workshop for council is to get more input, what you like, what you don't like, issues you have concerns with, do we need to work on more areas? This is, this is a draft. It is, it is meant to be a draft. I'm looking forward to see the latest pieces of it, which I'm supposed to see tomorrow, and then I will get those out immediately to you. But the overall, to remind everybody, this started with the public once again. We spent eight and a half months talking with people, trying to get their ideas as to what they thought about Shakopee's future. As I've said before, it didn't start with a bunch of planners in the back room. It started with the people, so we're pretty excited about what the people have said. And just really quickly, the plan is centered on 10 community priorities, which I've talked about before, and then what we have now are 12 big ideas, and we'll get into these a little more next time. But, big idea, number one, is to create a fresh impression. Number two is to rediscover the river. That's been a personal thing on mine since I've been here. Enhance economic clusters. Diversify our housing options. Revitalize First Avenue. Knit the community together. Connect people to nature. Foster civic life in public spaces. This council did something in that regard just a few weeks ago. Position for the new economy. Spark the startup culture. Support regional transit. And finally, celebrate big fun. I thought that was pretty exciting. That means that we're actually enjoying what we're doing in the city. More to come on all of those 400 and some odd pages of it, actually. In conjunction with Main Street and downtown Shakopee, who are leading the effort to host a farmer's market starting July 15th from 11:00 to 4:00 PM on Sundays at the new Lewis Street parking lot. The city designed that parking lot for just this kind of stuff. It has electricity out to it, it's a great venue, and I'm delighted to see the chamber's efforts in coordination with the city to get this off the ground. I think it's going to be a big hit.
Councilor Luce, did you have a comment?
Just, how much notice are we going to give residents that need that parking lot so that, you know, they get time to?
It's on, it's on a Sunday. I know that there's a lot of parking issues on Sundays, but we will work through them.
And I believe part of the parking lot will be open.
That's correct, sir.
That's right.
I will be in St. Cloud on Thursday and Friday for the League of Minnesota Cities Conference. I will also be on vacation from 1 to 8 July and will not be available at all. Nate will be in charge of everything at that point, obviously, including the council meeting on the 3rd. Really quickly, the 2018 council work plan is on your table, as well as a copy for the record with the city clerk. It has been updated online for the public, and you can see that today, matter of fact. Just really quickly, some highlights, and again, this is what we started out in early February as goals that the council wanted for staff to work on. Number one, low taxes. Preliminary budget numbers show no reason that we will not remain one of the lowest taxed cities in the metro area. Yes, we still are one of the lowest taxed cities in the metro area. Under continued financial stability, just last month, we had another great audit. Stable tax rate, preliminary budget should have same or lower tax rate from last year. We have an increased tax capacity with a 7.33% growth in the tax base for the 2019 budget year. And as Darren explained earlier, that's big news. That's big, that's a big deal. In regards to our efforts on increased bond rating, hats off to the finance staff and Darren, who have been working diligently towards that end and are continuing to hold meetings to discuss how we make that happen. Most of the things under park and recreation are actually going to be reviewed and looked at under the park and rec committee that we just formed, along with our new consultants. Land planning on the lifecycle housing, I noticed that, you know, that we currently have in the, in the hopper right now, all housing for all of the lifecycle, whether it be housing that's affordable, whether it be starter housing, whether it be elderly housing, we all have that working right now. Pretty excited about that. And then just a few other things, you know, under transparency, communications, and community engagement, we just redid our, our website, and so please take a look at that in the public. And if you see things that you think should be better or that we need to be better on, please let us know. I gave a talk today to the same group that Mayor Mars did a little later in the day, and I tried to explain that, you know, you may see that pothole out on that road for the last four weeks, and you may think, why isn't the city fixing this pothole? It may be that we don't know about the pothole. So, anytime you have those kinds of things, or if you see things on the, on our website or anything else that you think that we need to address, please let us know. Please let us know. You know, I love talking about good things, and, you know, there's some staff that I'd like to give some recognition to, who've had some milestones. Troy Cernia, who is our, in charge of our ice arena, has received the designation as a certified rink administrator and a certified ice rink manager by the U.S. Ice Rink Association. That's a big deal, and it's great to have that designation, and we have a real professional in place there. Lori Henson, who by the way, when I first came here, Lori was one of the few, one of the first people I sat down with. And it was, it was a delightful conversation, and I'll never forget when I said, well, so you're the acting city clerk? And she goes, yes. And I go, we don't act around here. You are, you are not. And so, I said, you are now the city clerk, we're not going to act, and I discussed with her about her professional development. And she took that to heart, and she really embraced the necessity for professional development and has a, a pretty exceptional award, when you think about it. This is a three-year program that she just completed, and she's been recognized by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks as an Athenian Fellow. And Lori, I want to thank you for not acting. I want to thank you for being and doing, and I sincerely appreciate that. You're doing a tremendous job. I've got a letter from the Lions Club as well that, and I would just want to read a few paragraphs because it, once again, is talking about the great things that our employees do every day. It's addressed to Bill Egan, who, as everyone knows, is in charge of our Parks Maintenance Division. And it says, "Dear Bill, on behalf of the Shakopee Lions, we want to express a huge thank you to you and your staff for helping to present Shakopee Toppa Park and Westminster Fields this past weekend at the 18th Annual Shakopee Lions Softball Tournament. This annual event is described as one of the crown jewels of the softball tournament season in Minnesota, and you have an incredible impact on showcasing our fields to the softball community. Toppa Park is unique with eight fields, all deep enough to hold all levels of play. Other events of this side size require multiple sites and often multiple cities to be successful. In Shakopee, the action is almost nearly in the same place. The attention to the fields that you paid did not go unnoticed. Teams commented again and again on the excellence of the fields, and we will anticipate a full tournament of returning teams again in 2019, many of which are local Shakopee teams. Bill, when we called with things we needed, you answered. Your staff was on top of everything. It was great to talk with you before the event and to see the obvious pride that you and your staff take in the facilities and ensure that Shakopee shows well to the huge audience who experienced it this weekend. Please know how much we appreciate everything. Thank you, the Shakopee Lions Softball Committee." I've said it before, you know, the people that really showcase us probably more than anyone else, or the guys that are out on the streets there every day, making sure that our streets are taken care of and making sure our ball fields are taken care of, and they do an outstanding job, and so I wanted to make sure that everyone recognized that. Finally, I'm looking forward to the opportunity, when I don't have to talk about Councilor Luce and his issues, unfortunately, this is not that time. Just really quickly, because frankly, after talking about a lot of good stuff, I really don't want to talk about stuff that isn't so good. We've already mentioned the budget listening session, which was in violation, excuse me, of his censure. I'm good to know that you were just there to meet somebody. We still have the continued refusal to comply with state law on two records requests. And finally, we had an unfounded ordinance complaint by Councilor Luce in the recent past that basically has determined, and I'll read a little bit about the review of that And this is from the chief of police. "I have reviewed the video from Councilor Luce's most recent ordinance call. The complaint was completely unfounded and needlessly took up staff time. As you know, this is not the first incident of this type and was once again done with retaliatory harassing intent. He has repeatedly violated the city code enforcement policy. In the future, we will not respond to any code enforcement complaint generated by Councilor Luce. If there is an emergency life-threatening complaint, please handle the call as you would any other call for service, but we are completely done with responding to his ordinance calls."
Ninety minutes?
I would like to respond to that.
Ninety minutes of a police officer's time wasted on a non-ordinance issue.
A person up on a ladder pressure washing a building over the entrance of a business door is a safety issue.
I make a motion to adjourn.
It was not, it was not an ordinance violation.
Second. I have a motion, a second on the table. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. We are adjourned here at 8:20.